Good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to the city council meeting today. I'd like to also remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham?
President.
Councilwoman Smith is absent today. Councilwoman Avery?
Here.
Councilman Back?
Here.
Councilman Wilson?
Here.
Councilwoman Manatra?
Here.
And Councilwoman Robinson is also absent today. We do have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Keith Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your many blessings, Father. We thank you for salvation. Most of all, we just pray for your guidance and direction, Father, as we carry through the business at hand. Lord, may everything we say, do, and think be pleasing to you, as I pray that we always seek your kingdom, your righteousness, and your will in all things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meeting held on June 25th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of June 21st through the 27th.
So moved. Sorry.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is preserved for proclamations and commendations. I don't believe we have any today, but we do have a special guest with us today. We have Dr. Kathy Murphy from Gadsden State Community College would like to come and speak to the mayor and the city council. So, Dr. Murphy, welcome.
Thank you.
And if you'll make sure that green light's on and that'll get you on the airwaves.
Well, thank you so much. It's always a privilege to be able to come and to spend time with such great and worthy folks. Mayor, thank you so much, and to the council, thank you so much for this privilege. I'm here to say thank you. I know that you get lots of occasions for our constituents who have concerns. I have no concern, I just have gratitude. So, let me say to you that, as you all know, we recently had our Board of Trustees and Chancellor Jimmy Baker, who visited with us at Gadsden State, visited our community. And as soon as I learned of their visit, I immediately headed to Craig Ford's office and I said, "Mayor, we have a great opportunity to show our city off and to leave folks with some really fond memories." And of course, he was all in and started to brainstorm with me how we would celebrate our community and how we would share our city with not only our chancellor, but our Board of Trustees and 24 of the presidents from Alabama community colleges throughout our state. Now, presidents are a little competitive with each other, so every one of us is trying to outdo the last president who hosted the Board of Trustees. And so, so far, I think we're at the apex. I don't know that they like me so much because we did a fabulous job of welcoming to our community and to our city, the Board of Trustees' presidents. And from pontoon boats, we took a couple of pontoon boats on the Coussa River. The mayor and I decided what we really wanted to do was to celebrate the city and our natural resources. And so, we got a couple of pontoon boats, and thank you, John Moore, for taking us on one of those boats. But that was a fabulous experience and went out and had lunch. And then, we had another group that went to Twin Bridges Golf Course and enjoyed that facility. Then you all worked with us to allow us to go out to Nakalula Falls, to see the beautiful falls, to enjoy the train ride. We had a great dinner out there. Appreciate the mayor and some of the staff who joined us for that dinner. And then, while you might have caught a little bit of flack, may I say to you, thank you for closing Memorial Bridge and giving us the experience to see sunset on Memorial Bridge and to enjoy some additional fellowship. You know, sometimes we're here and we forget how rich those resources are for us, but to have Nakalula Falls, to have that wonderful opportunity to be on the Coussa River, our golf course, and all the things that we offer to our constituents and guests can come in and enjoy is really a wonderful thing. One of our presidents actually said to me, "I'm moving to Gadsden." I said, "Well, you're not having my job, so..." Nor am I switching colleges with you. But that was the enthusiasm demonstrated. Chancellor could not have, Mr. Baker could not have been more excited about what he talked about being the relationship that exists. You know, we are a community college. That means that while we're a college, we are a part of this community. And his expectation of us and my heart's desire is that Gadsden State is community college, that yes, we're about the education of our constituents, but how we are part of this community and how do we support you and the many, many ways that you all support us, I could never express enough gratitude. So, simply to say to you today, thank you so much. We've left some folks with really fond memories of the city of Gadsden and of this region of the state, and it is because of the way we work together, it's that collaboration that we experience. I say this almost every day on our campus, let's all climb out of our silos and figure out how we're going to get this work done together, because as long as we're all in our silos, we're not going to be progressive. And so, I love the way, Mayor Ford, thank you so much for the great relationship that exists between our offices and to our council, our college, for all the ways that we find to work together. By the way, I took a quick jog back over to our sports complex. Let me say commendations to you about that facility. It was hot as heck yesterday, by the way, but I went back there and I just get so excited to see what the city's doing with the sports complex. I'm so excited with what Gadsden State's doing with baseball and softball, and I think we're the litmus test. We're the textbook of how you work together for the good of constituents and for our community. And so, to all the councilmen, to our chair, Mr. Back, to our mayor, I am so grateful and thank you. The privilege is mine to be in this community and to serve alongside you. Thank you for the privilege.
Thank you, Dr. Murphy.
Mr. President.
Very nice. Yes, Mayor Ford?
So, I want to echo what Dr. Murphy was saying. Chancellor Baker's a friend of mine from Montgomery and a friend of my father's. Jimmy was not only so good to us, but he sent us a good president. So, Dr. Murphy, thank you. And it is phenomenal to see the city, and it started with the previous administration and council, but working together with Gadsden State. Just to tell you, you know, it's easy when we ride down and we see an issue because we're in partnership together on the sports complex, and I'll call Dr. Murphy or text her and I'll say, "Can we do this?" She goes, "I'm on it." And then, she'll do the same to me. But we just recently had a softball tournament down there, and the fences there redoing the baseball field, and half our parking lot was fenced in. And they called and they said, "The people that are doing Gadsden State's complex have fenced in half our parking lot." And I said, "Oh, no." So, I called Blake Lewis, the athletic director. I said, "Blake, you can't block off our parking lot." He said, "You're the one that told me to do it." So, I said, "Well, I don't know what I was thinking." And he said, "Well, let me go down there and I'm going to unblock it. I'll make sure it's all happening." So, it's just the way we work together and the way we communicate. And the whole issue is, it's not a problem. We're all trying to achieve the same objective, and it's sometimes we all go different routes, but we're all trying to cross that finish line together. And it seems like we're running on the same route, and that's what I love, because that's not always been the case. So, Dr. Murphy, thank you for allowing us to host that, and thank you to Tina, John, and Ruth, and Brett, and everybody on our staff. We didn't mind shutting down the bridge for 24 college presidents to showcase Gadsden because we enjoyed it, and that was a big deal for us. I don't know if it's ever been done in Gadsden, but having all of the junior college presidents in the city limits of Gadsden and showcasing our area, that's phenomenal. And Dr. Murphy pulled that off. And then, the next day, they cut a ribbon for their workforce development building, which was just a beautiful sight. So, just want to say thank you.
And to your partners in recreation, who work so hard with us. And thank you for mentioning Tina and others, so many.
Christine at the Falls. It was just a great effort, so.
So great.
Yeah, thank you.
It was a great event. Thank you for being here. You're always welcome.
Dr. Murphy, I'd just like to add to that. If you wouldn't mind passing along my thank you to Alan Smith. I got a really nice letter from him, or note from him, and I'll be honest with you, that's the shortest words I've ever heard from Alan, but it's only because the note was only this big. He couldn't fit more.
I'm going to pass that on, too.
Tell it all. That's good. Thank you. Thank you again. Thanks, Mayor Ford. All right, well, we'll go to section, or item number eight, rather, in section Unfinished Business. Eight A is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property. This ordinance was presented last week for the first reading. It conveys property located at 1513 Terrace Drive in District One to Free Enterprise LLC, which offered to pay $1,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item nine, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license for Ashland Three Enterprises LLC, doing business as Wooden Indian Three. The location is 3010 East Meagan Boulevard in District One, and it's for retail beer and table wine, off premises only. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Okay, the Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is our final public hearing. It's a resolution approving alcoholic beverage license, Ashland Three Enterprises LLC, doing business as Wooden Indian Three, located at 3010A East Meagan Boulevard in District One, has applied for a package store license. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Anyone wish to speak in favor?
So, just for clarification, Mr. President, both of these are located at the same address. One is a convenience store that'll sell beer and wine, and one is a package store that will sell spirits. Is that correct?
I believe that is.
All right, can I ask you to, if you could come to the podium so we could hear you a little bit better? Thank you.
And on your walk up here, I'll just clarify, I own multiple retail licenses, so I understand that the facilities have to be separated by two different addresses and entries.
And if you will, ma'am, for our records, if you'll just identify yourself, tell us who you are and where you live.
I'm Cherry Ryder. I live here in Gadsden. We have three businesses here in Gadsden.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
So, this is just a third. So, one door is open for business for beer, wine, tobacco. The other is strictly liquor, and that's according to ABC laws.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you, and thank you for investing in Gadsden. Thank you for locating your businesses here.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
I don't think we have a motion in second yet.
Oh, we didn't? Did I skip over that? I must be hungry. I must be wanting to get to lunch.
Yeah.
All right. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Now, is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is new business. I think we have a couple this morning.
Yes, Mr. President, and I've got a couple that have to do with CDBG funds. For those of you who may not be familiar with the acronym, it stands for Community Development Block Grant. This is money that we receive every year from the federal government, and it's intended to do any number of things, from improving local communities to paving roads. There's some housing assistance funding in there for low to moderate income individuals who are trying to make necessary repairs to their home that may not have the resources to do so. So, there's a lot that encompasses this CDBG. So, the first one we'll do is just technically amending last year's CDBG budget, the general fund budget. So, we had CDBG funds that were earmarked for this revolving loan fund that had not been utilized, and so, we are re-appropriating that $145,800 to cover the cost of the roof renovations at the Carver Center. So, if there's no objections, I would like to suspend the rules and consider this under new business today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for immediate consideration.
Okay, Mr. President, my other one is directly.
Got to move to adopt.
I'm sorry, move to adopt.
There we go. And second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
My second one is directly related to it. This is the, an ordinance approving the 2024 CDBG budget and action plan for the upcoming program year, which runs from June 1st, 2024, through May 31st of 2025. So, again, the total amount of this budget is $967,073. $947,073 of that is our allocation from CDBG. So, the other $20,000, if I'm not mistaken, comes from revenue we generate from some loan programs that we had done in the past where people are paying back, where we might have loaned individuals from a different program in the past, funds to make improvements to their home, and they're paying those back. So, that $20,000 in program income is just those loan payments. Otherwise, the bulk of the funding comes from the federal government in the form of those CDBG block grants. So, of that $967,000, $183,000 of that is earmarked for the administration of the programs. $110,000 of that goes to a loan repayment under Section 108. There's $200,000 allocated for housing assistance. $251,200 of this is allocated for street improvements, meaning paving. And then, $151,629 is allocated for accessible playground equipment. As many of you know, we recently built a brand-new, state-of-the-art, handicap-accessible playground at the Gadsden Sports Park. Now, our goals have kind of expanded beyond that to start adding, circling back and adding more handicap-accessible pieces of equipment to all of our playgrounds throughout the city. So, this $151,000 will be allocated to help install handicap-accessible playground equipment throughout the city of Gadsden. And then, finally, a section of allocated funds for public service, Manna, which is Meals on Wheels. If y'all have ever heard of Meals on Wheels, that is Manna that delivers to seniors and elderly that can't get out and aren't mobile. They bring them a hot, fresh meal. So, that's $25,000 to Manna. Way of the Cross, which is a nonprofit. Breakaway Ministries, another nonprofit, they will each get $5,000. The Council on Aging of Edgewall County will get $4,500. The Family Success Center will receive $10,000. The James N. Berry Center for Children will receive $7,500. The Boys and Girls Club will receive $7,500, and the Edgewall County Food Bank will receive $6,000. So, one thing before I make a motion to consider this, that I'd like everybody to consider, some of these figures for the public service nonprofits that are listed here are lower than they were last year. But again, if you look back over a five-year average, these dollar amounts are actually higher than what they averaged. Over the last couple of years with us allocating money to nonprofits, it's been a little bit, a little unorthodox because of the American Rescue Plan funding and all these one-time injections of cash that the city received. We allocated all that out to our nonprofits and service providers throughout Gadsden. So, it's easy, if you haven't been keeping up over the last several years, to look at, when we do budgets, to look at something and go, "What the heck? They got $100,000 last year, and they're only getting $5,000 this year. Y'all are terrible." Well, that $95,000 that they got last year was a one-time thing because we got one-time money from the federal government through the stimulus package, and we pushed that money out. So, just understand, even though these numbers are slightly lower for some of these organizations than they were last year, it still represents an increase in their level funding over the last five or six years. So, I can't imagine anything else I could say about this ordinance. So, with that in mind, I'd like to suspend the rules and consider this under new business.
Second.
All right, clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have unanimous consent for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, that's all for new business. Now, we'll go to departments, reports, committees, and boards. I believe we have Derek from EMA. Good morning.
Good morning. So, I just wanted to go over a couple of things. The first being that we will host our annual CERT class this year in September. We've posted that information to our social media. You can email us at cityofgadsden, ema@cityofgadsden.com if you would like to sign up for this. This is a free class, free training, and things like that, that you can, you can come and learn how to help your community. One of the new exciting things that we're going to do this year is we're actually going to offer a teen CERT. So, this is for students ages 15 to 18. This is the first time in a long time that this has been held. So, we are hosting this training in conjunction with one of our volunteer fire departments, Coats Bend Volunteer Fire, but it is open to students throughout Edgewall County, like I said, ages 15 to 18. And this will start that process of instilling the willingness to serve your community in time of disaster for these students. You know, these guys get the same hands-on training. Everything is supervised by professionals, and these guys can learn about first aid, fire safety, search and rescue, and things like that. So, we are, we are very excited to be able to host that this year. And then, I also wanted to touch on the heat that we've been experiencing and more that will come. Obviously, heat is one of the most dangerous killers in the state of Alabama, and, you know, we want people to realize that just because you think you're prepared, you're not always prepared. If you're going to be working out in the sun, you need to start drinking water the day before. Don't start it just that morning. Continue to rehydrate your body with water and electrolytes. Take frequent breaks. Make sure you're, make sure you're wearing light clothing, loose clothing. Find the air conditioning. You know, if you can't find air conditioning, we do have some of our local cooling centers. We will post that information as it's updated. Bless you, sir. We will post that information as it's updated on our social media. And then, you know, make sure you watch out for the signs of heat stroke and heat exhaustion. So, thank you guys very much. If anybody has any questions about CERT or teen CERT, feel free to reach out to me through our social media or, like I said, through ema@cityofgadsden.com. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Good report. Thank you. All right. Any other departments or reports, boards? If not, we'll go to remarks by mayor and council. Mayor Ford?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to, we had a retirement of a captain in the police department, and we wish him well. Bobby Jackson has put in his retirement papers and served Gadsden Police Department for a long time, so we wish him well and thank him for his service. John Allred, who is here sitting up at the front, raise your hand. He is now serving as interim captain. He was lieutenant. He's also sergeant major in the Alabama National Guard and very well thought of and respected. So, we appreciate Captain Allred filling in. We also completed the Barbarian Challenge. I'm not sure how many participants we had, but I'm sure it was sold out. I believe it was, John. And one thing I wanted to mention about that was that we offered the employees to go up and help, the city employees. We had over 100 city employees that volunteered their time to go up on a Saturday and help work the Barbarian Challenge. So, I want to thank the employees for doing that. That was, that was kind of a refresher to see everybody working together as people that never seen each other, met each other, and realized they all work together. And they got to watch John attempt the bars, and he went approximately 13 inches. And the bars were about 10 feet, so he made a little over a foot, so we're proud of him. Erin recorded it. If you'd like to see the video, she'd be happy to show you.
Oh, good.
But we also want to give you an update on our Parks and Rec Director. We have been in the interview process. We've narrowed it down to three. We're bringing them back into our community, and we're taking them around to see our parks. So, this is a very important hire because this person is face-to-face with a lot of the public at all times, and it deals with everybody in our districts, kids and leagues and et cetera, and then brings in a lot of tourists to our area. So, this is a big hire for us, and we're taking this very serious, and we have some great candidates. Public Works, y'all, I can't say enough about Public Works. The tree crews, the grass-cutting crews, the weeding crew, the litter crew. Just think that they're out, and you heard Derek with EMA talking about what they're doing, but they're out there working in this heat. They're preparing for the Fourth of July events, which I'm going to get to on the times. But one thing I wanted was on Pursuer Park. I wanted the trees cut where people didn't have to stand on their cars and overlook. So, we cleared out a viewing path for them. We also want to make sure the flags were up in time. That's something that we put into place. We want to make sure everything looked good for the community coming in, because you'll see 411 just packed with people. Sergeant Major Allred has created an opt plan for public traveling to and from for safety, so our police is involved. I mean, it's such a big operation, but sometimes we don't thank our employees enough for what they do. A fire truck the other day responded to a call in a neighborhood, I believe in District Two or Three, and the call was over, and a bunch of kids came out, and he took an hour out of his time to sit there and let them climb all over the truck and have fun and get to know them. So, it's just, sometimes we just don't see what our employees are doing. Not all our employees are City of Gadsden residents, but they all get a paycheck from Gadsden, and they love Gadsden, so, and we love our employees. I want to thank Janet and John and her whole staff for what they're doing for the Fourth of July events. I want to go over it real quick. There is a billboard with all the events. At 6:00 on July the 4th, Thursday night, there's a concert where the ice skating rink was located for Christmas on the Coussa. It is Fly By Radio. Some of y'all at my age understand who Fly By Radio was. A lot of good, that's a good band. It's a free event, open to the public. And then, at 9:00, we have the fireworks show. We're working with the Patriots Association, are hosting this. We put some more money into it this year to extend it. We probably, I'd put our fireworks show up there with anybody in the state of Alabama. So, it's going to be an exciting event. And then, Friday night, it just so happens, it's the First Friday. So, we have First Friday events, and then, at 9:00 again, we have a concert at the amp. So, I'm not sure who the band is, but I think it's a country band, and there'll be a concert Friday night. So, when people say there's nothing to do in Gadsden, they are wrong. There's a lot to do. But just like Derek said, stay hydrated because the heat is out, and it's going to be out for a while, and we want to make sure we don't have any casualties. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. There is a lot going on in Gadsden. Everybody go and look at social media to find out. Councilwoman Latham?
I have no remarks.
No remarks today? All right. Councilwoman Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just keep your heads up as it relates for community, there'll be a finance committee meeting that'll be publicized here soon. Also, a District Three community meeting also will be in play here soon before July ends. And then, I'm going to close with, I guess, words to District Three community. There had been some vandalizing of properties in District Three. If I'm not mistaken, haven't been able to get insight from anyone in the police department, but I think that these, there was teenagers, I think they have been detained or have been called a penalizer, or whatever the case may be. So, I go back to this, parents, pay attention to what your children are doing. Have some contact with your children to know where they are. This could have ended in a very bad way with someone to go to vandalize someone's property. property. Property owner could have been present, and then there could have been some, some, some very different calls. And so whereas there are lots of things going on in the city, we got to figure out some things to, to, to do in our community also. And so I, I, I'm giving, I guess, a notice to parents to please participate in your local government, please participate in what's going on in the city so that you can re-channel your children's attention to those areas so that they won't be so creative in what they do that is not conducive to, I guess, good behavior, because that's not good behavior. And so whereas we want, as the city is growing, we want our young people to be involved in that, and one way they can be involved in that is by being involved in, in good things. Okay? So this is to the parents, please watch and, and pay attention to what your children are doing, where they are, where they're going. Pay attention, there are some guns now out that I guess are water, shooting water pellets. You put them in water, they get hard, but, but they are powerful enough to where they can bust out windows. And so if they can obviously bust out windows, then also we know, we can imagine what they can do to another human being. And so again, understand that they're trying to find some things to, to do and, and to be a part of, but again, this also plays to our parents, to pay attention to what your kids are doing and being involved in, in their activities while this summer, while school is still out, and they are a part of summer activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilman Wilson?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Just to add to the festivities, also keep in mind on July the 3rd, which is a Wednesday, I believe, this year?
Yeah.
The fourth on the Thursday?
Yeah.
Yeah. So July 3rd tomorrow will be the 10th Annual Blue Jeans Apple Pie Elvis Independence Day Fireworks Extravaganza, brought to you by Back Forty Beer Company. So make sure y'all make it over to Back Forty for the fireworks show. It's always a good time. I always tell people, it's not how big the fireworks are, it's how close you are to the explosion that really makes it a great fireworks show. So y'all come on out. Yeah. 10 years, minor injuries, minor at best. I also want to say thank you to our outside agencies and police officers and firefighters and first responders. Man, it's just amazing, all the department heads and the employees here at the city. It's amazing what you guys are doing day in and day out that nobody even knows about or recognizes. So thank y'all. And please, speaking of Fourth of July, please don't drink and drive. People don't think about this, but the fatality rate, alcohol-related fatalities go up almost double on the weekend of Fourth of July in America over any other weekend. The highest amount of alcohol-related fatalities happen on the Independence Day weekend, more than any other holiday. So please, 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 don't drink and drive. There's enough people out there that can come get you or just stay somewhere, or, you know, call somebody to come get you before you get behind the wheel of a vehicle. It's just so sad to see every year we lose somebody in this community to alcohol-related death, drinking and driving, and it just doesn't have to be that way. Finally, y'all, as was noted earlier, Councilman Robinson's out today. Y'all be with him. He was injured picking up his weekly bags of gold bars to take up to District Seven, so he's at home nursing that, that back back to health. That's all.
Thanks, Council. Councilwoman Minotra.
I would just like to invite anyone that hasn't had the opportunity to see the new Senior Wellness Center in Alabama City. It's located at 2829 West Megan Boulevard. It's open Monday through Friday from 8 to 4. They have a calendar of events for both fitness and health, as well as all other activities. It's a beautiful facility. They have now over 200 that have applied for membership, and that membership is free. But there's a lot going on, and it's well worth the trip just to take the tour. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I'd like to echo just all the thanks to the city employees and the things that have been going on here, and just wonderful relationship with Gadsden State Community College and Dr. Kathy Murphy. She and I were speaking earlier in the, before we had the meeting, and I think this really is a textbook case for how a city and a community college can effectively work together to bring about the most positive change and occurrences in your community. So I'm proud to be a part of that, and Mayor, thank you for your leadership there, and to Dr. Murphy as well. I want to have kind of an announcement the Gadsden Police Department has asked me to make. There have been several cars broken into in recent weeks. There was an arrest made this morning, and so, but it's probably not over. What's happening is we're leaving our cars unlocked, we're leaving our keys in our cars and trucks, we're leaving doors unlocked. And so certain individuals are going around our neighborhoods, and they're jiggling these door handles to see which ones are open. They're not breaking in, they're just seeing what car is open. So lock your car, take your keys, lock the doors into your garages, into your outbuildings, and I think that'd go a long way to stopping this. The other point of it is, I'm part of a few neighborhood watch groups on Facebook in my district, and so from time to time, there'll be a post of, this car is riding around real slow, not sure, I've never seen it before. Before you make that post, call the Gadsden Police Department. That's, that's what they do. They, they take phone calls on things like that, and they'll come and investigate that. So you're not bothering the police. I think a lot of times we feel like we're going to bother the police. They, you're, you're not going to bother the police, right, Captain Allred?
That's right.
That's, that's right. We're not going, I mean, they, they, they want to be called so they can go and, and check into that to make sure our neighborhoods are safe. So call the police, then, then make the post. Specifically, in, in my district, we, we've had this, this happen, so I want to make sure that folks in District Four are calling the police when they see something that's, they know is not normal, kind of out of, just out of the norm, call the police, and I think we'll all be better off if, if you can do that, or if you will do that. Mayor Ford, I was also going, I have, I've had a lot of calls about trees at the 759 Rainbow Drive. I guess everybody from my district's going home, and they're seeing the trees cut down. I will, I did call and check. Those trees that have been cut down have had a fungus and had a disease. We haven't just indiscriminately just cranked up our chainsaws and just having a great time cutting down trees. These are trees that were dead or dying and, and needed to be removed based on our city employees, our arborists, and people like that that understand what they're looking at. So please, I'm speaking on behalf of the mayor, but we're, we're not just nilly-willy cutting down trees. Those trees were dead or dying, were dangerous, needed to be cut down. We are going to plant new trees, correct, Mayor Ford? So new trees are, are going to be planted, and I realize in our lifetime, some of us, maybe we don't see them grow to that 60-foot, 70-foot tree that was cut down, but we are replacing what we've cut down in those certain areas. So just want to let everybody know respectfully as possible, we're doing the best we can to not cut down trees that don't need to be cut down, but those trees were diseased and, and they needed to be removed. So I want to thank also the gentleman for investing in District One today, buying a lot for $1,000. I think that was through the Gadsden Land Bank, right? And so the Gadsden Land Bank is open, Mayor Ford's got a, a really good vision in there, a good team put together. We need people to come and buy those lots and build houses on them for our citizens. So thank you for doing that. We appreciate your continued investment in the, in the city. This isn't your first time to do this, and so what we need is more people like you. We need more people putting an investment in our city to make our city a better place to live, and thank you for what you're doing. Want to remind everybody again, be safe. That is, is a busy weekend. There'll be a lot of traffic out, a lot of people traveling. Pay attention to children running around playing. This is summertime. We don't want to have anything happen, so slow down in the neighborhoods. I still get continued calls about speeding, and the police department is still writing, probably writing more tickets today than they've written in quite some time, but we can't be there every minute of every day on every street to stop the speed or so. You need to stop the speeding. Stop going fast in our neighborhoods. Just, you can't be in that big of a hurry. You can't be that important that you've got to get somewhere maybe 45 seconds faster if you're going 50 in the 25 zone. Just please think of others. Please slow down, and, and it'll make our neighborhoods so much nicer and so much safer. All right, with that being said, hope everybody has a happy July 4th. We'll be back next week.